Okay, Mr. Chair, I know it's one more minute, two, but our livestream is going, so if you want to get started, we have everybody.
Okay, can everyone put their cameras on? Good afternoon, everyone. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I continue with my remarks, I'd like to make some introductions. First, our panel, on my far left is Ms. Natalia Popovic; on my immediate left, Ms. Laura Alderson; on my immediate right, Ms. Sophia Riddick; and on my far right, Mr. Bill Dalton. And at the far-left end of the desk, she's normally sitting there all the time, I'll wait until she sits, is our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Barbara Bartosik. And in front of the panel, we have our Barbara's support staff. And I'm Dawn Taylor, I'll be cheering this afternoon's hearing. We acknowledge, no, the Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and are registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will be automatically muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our hearing procedure is that I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda, except for items where the applicant has requested deferral, in which case I will move that item up to the front so that we can be disposed of quickly. Where an applicant is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals, either in support or opposed to the application, will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. That will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be then taken into committee for a decision. Okay, I would ask firstly of our panel, are there any declarations of interest for items in this time slot?
Yes, I have one with item twenty. It appears the architects on this project are from, with the firm I work, IBA Group Arquita, so I'm going to declare a conflict.
So you will be excusing yourself soon? Okay. I now ask the same question to, of staff, are there any declarations of interest on any of the items? No. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for a deferral in this time slot?
It's not so much a request, item twenty-one, I've been advised that there's a missing variance, but the applicant will be here to address that.
Which one is that?
Item twenty-one, one eighty Queens Drive.
Yeah. Okay. And Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed this afternoon? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we can now proceed with the agenda, and we will start with item twenty as soon as Mr. Dalton leaves the room.
Oh, can we do the deferral, item twenty-one?
Oh, yeah, we'll do, sorry. Bill, do you want to sit down? Sorry.
Okay, coming back now.
I had a lot to say about dealing with deferrals first, and then ignored my own advice. So we will deal with the deferral request first, and that's item number twenty-one, which is... I'll just quickly summarize it here. We have an application for consent and an application for minor variance, and the property is one eighty Queens Drive. The agent is Rennie Cannon.
And, Mr. Chair, we have two area residents on your list, plus an additional three more on mine that I've, we've added since people have shown up to speak to us.
Okay, so we have, one of the five is in-person, and the other four are virtual?
Uh, there's three in-person, so there's four total in-person, one virtual, and then the agent is virtual. So we'll get them to speak to the deferral request.
Okay, so we need to hear from the agent first.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, barely. If you could speak a little louder, it would help.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's better.
Um, yes, I'm Rennie Cannon. I'm the architect and agent on the application. The reason we're requesting a deferral is there were seven variances that were identified on the zoning certificate. However, on the public notice, there was only six that were listed. On the zoning certificate, there was item number five, which pertained to third-floor platforms. That was not included on the public notice. So for that reason, we're requesting a deferral, I believe, until the August fourteenth hearing date, just to allow the public time to consider it as well.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions for Mr. Cannon? No? Okay, then let's hear firstly from the folks in the room. Is Tony Civacino one of them?
Yes.
Okay. Afternoon, sir. Give us your name and address, and speak to us.
Test, yes.
Before you speak, sir?
Yes.
What's under consideration right now is whether or not we defer this application to another date. We won't be talking about the merits of this application today. So what I essentially need to know from you is whether you're okay or not with deferring this item to a future date.
My name is Tony Civacino, one ninety Queens Drive. It is about the address of one eighty Queens Drive. I can defer it to August fourteenth, of which I'll sign up and be here again.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in?
Yeah, so we have a couple more. So Joshua Lee, if you'd like to come up and just confirm. All right, you're okay with the deferral? And then Timothy Foley? Foley? Perfect. And then Brandon Mool? Good, okay. Those are the, all the people in, are present. And then there's one online, Alejandra Padron. Alejandra, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Alejandra Padron. I'm just speaking as an agent on behalf of Michael Belissimo and Michelle De Souza. They're the owners of one seventy-five Queens Drive. They are neighbors to the subject property. We're in favor of the deferral to August.
Okay, thanks, thanks to all of you. So as you understand, or hopefully you understand, there will be a new notice and a new hearing, and you'll certainly have your opportunity to speak to the merits of this proposal at that time. So, call for a motion to officially dispense with this?
Can we clarify, is the August fourteenth date confirmed to hear, we hear this case?
It's still possible, but it's, it can be deferred next available, and then we'll just put it on.
If we put it for August fourteenth in the motion, will it be August fourteen?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll move to defer this matter to August fourteenth, as requested by the applicant to address the notice deficiency.
Thank you, Ms. Riddick. Is there a secondary for Ms. Riddick?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson, all in favor? Okay, the application has been deferred by unanimous vote. So we'll now move back to the regular part of this agenda. Starting with item twenty. Application for consent, no minor variances. This is with respect to two, four, six, twelve, sixteen, twenty, thirty-two, thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty-two, and forty-six Gibbs Road. And the consent is requested to sever the property into five lots and to create various easements, right-of-ways, rights-of-way. There are, we have a presentation. We have a Ministry of Transportation advisory, that this property is within their permit control area. And we have conditions of approval from Development Engineering and Transportation Review, and we have a clearance from the Community Planning Department. So this is a rather complex application. I think if we could hear from the agent, Adrian Frank.
Good afternoon, sir, and through you, members of the committee. I, I do have a presentation, and I believe slides were sent out, so if I could ask that those be shown, thank you very kindly.
And give us your address, please, Mr. Frank.
Certainly, it's one eight eight Avenue Road.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, recognizing I have five minutes, I'm going to be brief and succinct, but I would be remiss not to start with a note. My client and I both wish to express gratitude to Ms. Bartosik and the staff of the committee, and to note in particular the help we had from Nicole Milrose, our planner, in handling what is a particularly complex application. I've been practicing for thirteen years. This is the most technical, complex, and potentially overwhelming application through the volume of materials alone that I've ever submitted. We began this process over a year ago, and since that time, we've had ongoing exchanges with committee staff, ensuring, double, triple, triple-checking the various elements of the mutual consents that you see in front of you. In spite of that fact, staff have been patient, diligent, and have helped us work through the technical and procedural hurdles. So moving to the next slide, I will walk you through what's on the site now. This is a roughly rectangular site, and it's the site of an ongoing redevelopment. On the next slide, you'll see the two-phase nature of this. The gray is phase one, covering the upper portion and the right-hand portion, those are north and east of the site. Phase two is uncompleted. Phase one complete, phase two uncompleted, and that's the purpose of our consent today. On the next slide, you'll see that this was a phased mixed-use development, and in, in the teal color, that is what's constructed and existing, and phase two is the yellow. So what's being built as, as a whole is a total of fifteen hundred units already built in those two ten-story buildings, retail space and some residential rental. What is to come is residential condo towers above a five-story podium. One, a third residential tower has been developed, and then some townhouse units. Moving on to the next slide. This development application culminated in an approval by city council in March twenty seventeen, some technical updates in twenty eighteen, condo approvals in twenty twenty-two, and then this, this matter was in front of the committee in twenty twenty-three to make adjustments for gross floor area. And that was because one of the buildings was able to, to lower ceiling heights and thereby get some additional residential units in an area that has become very desirable, and this, this committee approved that. The only adjustment that was needed was GFA. It all filled within the approved build-up form envelope. So, moving on to the next slide, the purpose here is to facilitate what's left, allowing for transfer and financing of the various parcels, and creation of the necessary easements that form relationships between these parcels. As you'll see on this slide, there are a lot of different colors. There is a level of complexity, as I noted, that I have not seen in many other applications, and to a degree, I've never seen before. But what is before you is eight sheets of stratified plans showing, and pardon me, it's, it's several additional sheets when you get into the sections, that show how these various parcels interlock with one another. And to simplify all of that, we've given you a color-coded system to, to sort of walk through those various sheets. If we go to the next slide, you'll see five colors. The first two are retail parcels, the third is a parking parcel, the fourth is the existing developments, condos A, B, and C. And then the remaining two, we have listed as client-owned and future phase DE. That future phase is what is left to develop. The client-owned portion is shared elements such as roadways and access points that will be dealt with in the final condo applications, to, to be a portion to the, the appropriate condo, and to provide for the necessary maintenance. Now, if you could just scroll through the next five slides, I believe through number fourteen, you will see.
Mr. Frank, you, technically, you only have twenty-six seconds and counting to wrap this up. Can you do that?
I, I will do my best, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll chime in again when you're about thirty seconds late.
Thank you, sir. What, what you see on those slides is the complexity. What's left for me to tell you about is the mutual easements. And what's on the slide now is the nature of those mutual easements. It's to allow for various rights for construction, maintenance, and services, both the construction of those things, and then access for both vehicles and pedestrians. Sir, we, we take no issue with the materials that have been submitted, that respond from staff to the application. In our submission, evident regard has been given to health, safety, convenience, and accessibility, welfare of present and future inhabitants, and that is at the core of the statutory tests here, not just through this application, but the nine-year process has carried us here, and we ask that you approve this application.
Mr. Frank, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up very quickly.
Thank you, sir. We ask that you approve the application on the basis of the extensive work that has been done, the fact that there are no objections, and subject to any of your questions, I commend this to your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Frank. Panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Frank? None? And Adam, I don't believe we have anyone in the hearing room or at home.
That is correct, Mr. Chair, just the agent.
Okay. So let's go into committee, if we need to have a bit of a discussion, or we can move to a decision.
Mr. Chair, other than the standard consent conditions, there are no other recommended conditions for this application. Unless there are any other comments or questions involved. Mr. Chair, although I appreciate that this is a very complex and multi-layered application, I note that as the, as, thank you, as Madam DST has indicated, there are no other particular conditions imposed. I see that community planning is, has removed the request for deferral, that Development Engineering and Transportation have no objections, and that MTO has recommended approval. On that basis, I move to approve this matter as is, with no conditions. Standard consent, thank you.
Is there a secondary for Ms.?
I can second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? The application has been approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Item twenty-one was deferred. We can now move to item twenty-two. Fifty-three Fairfield Avenue.
We have two late additions in chambers to speak to this one.
In addition to what I have here?
Which is just the agent, exactly.
So there's two. And are they in the room?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, just, Mr. Baschiano, or Ms. Baschiano, mister? Oh, I know you. I'm just gonna quickly do a little summary here. I'm gonna do a little summary of your, your project here. Okay, so we have a application for consent, two applications for minor variances, one application for each of the proposed parts. So, we do have some speakers, Mr. Baschiano, but if he could please present your project to us?
The project, first, my name is Nicola Baschiano, and I'm here for fifty-three Fairfield Avenue. The purpose of the project is to demolish the existing one-and-a-half-story aluminum single-family dwelling, sever the lot into two equal parts, and construct two new two-story semi-detached brick single-family dwellings, each with attached one-car garage, requiring zoning variances to the zoning by law as outlined in, no, the zoning notices.
So? Panel, questions, comments? None? Okay, let's hear.
So first, area resident is May Yang.
Good afternoon, community members. I'm the owner of fifty-five Fairfield Avenue Etobicoke, MAW one R six. The adjacent property to, to the proposed redevelopment at the fifty-three Fairfield Avenue Etobicoke, fire number B zero zero one three dash two five E Y car, E Y K, sorry. I'm here formally to object to the application submitted by the owner of fifty-three Fairfield Avenue Etobicoke, seeking to construct a semi, two semi-detached dwelling on a undersized lot. The reason for my objection as follow: non-compliance with zoning requirements. The subject property does not meet the minimum frontage and the lot area requirement as prescribed under City of Toronto zoning by law five six nine dash two zero one six, specifically section nine hundred dot six dot ten two B two. The minimum required frontage for the semi-detached house is ten point five meter. The proposed semi-detached dwelling frontage is six point eight six meter. Being roughly fifty percent less than the standard semi-detached on the street, existing on the street, this is not, will not fit in with existing street scape of the neighborhood, and reduce availability of parking for the property and the neighborhood, since there will not be less available space to park on the property, and additional dwelling require more parking. Section nine hundred dot six dot ten A two by law five six nine dash two zero one three. The minimum requirement lot area for a semi-detached dwelling is three hundred twenty-five square meters. The proposed new dwelling lot area will be two hundred thirty-six square meters. This is nearly one hundred square meter less than what the city considers the minimum area to be suitable for a semi-detached. This is not minor variance request. A hundred square meter variance requires on a small lot, to begin with, it's a significant variance. Section nine hundred dot six ten dot two D two by law five six nine dash two zero one three. The maximum permit floor space index for a semi-detached dwelling is zero point six times of the area lot, which is one hundred forty-one point eight square meter. The new dwelling will have a floor space of zero point seven three times of the area of the lot, which is one hundred seventy-three square meters. In keep with all the variance requests here, this one, again, is over thirteen percent greater than what the city considered suitable and fit in with the neighborhood. Section ten dash eighty dash forty dash twenty-one by law five six nine dash two zero one three. The maximum permit building length for the semi-detached dwelling is seventeen meters. The new proposed semi-detached dwelling will have a length of eighteen point twenty-eight meters. This variance requires one twenty-eight meters longer than the permit length, which will result in those two properties protruding and break the neighborhood parallel line, and the increased amount of, decrease, sorry, decreased amount of the yard and the green space in the neighborhood. Allowing this building would drastically alert the aesthetic of the street scape. The proposed development over intensification of a small lot is inconsistent with the character of the existing neighborhood, which have article spacing, side yard, and setbacks. Again, here's more concerns: impact on adjacent property. The reduced sidewalks and the increased building mass will...
Ma'am, you have, you have thirty, you have thirty seconds to wrap up?
Okay. So, in conclusion, the, this builder requests four variances. None of them is minor. They're combined together, they're significant. They're combined together, they're significant. There is a chart, well, form clearly demonstrate. So this is the, uh, this is the area lot. The green part demonstrate the meet requirement. The, the red part, that means, uh, they short, they short this much for the lot of area. And this chart demonstrate that. The frontage, the frontage, the green part is they meet the requirement. The red part, that's the shortage. So that's the standard of the city coding, coding zoning by law. So in conclusion, I urge community really look into the case under quotation of seventy-eight on the same street, because the side back is too close, foundation to foundation, that house is already been built, but it being called off by the city.
I think we've heard as much as we can hear from you.
Uh-huh.
We did ask you to wrap up over a minute ago, so.
Okay. So please quotation that, the damage is already happened. The foundation is cracked. So what will happen to that, uh, the neighbor beside seventy-eight, it's potentially likely what happened to us. In this morning, this builder's another product, which cross fifty-three, is being repaired, repair job. It's just, uh, the new.
Okay, ma'am, I'm sorry, we're not gonna hear anymore. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, a lady? If you could take your seat for a few minutes? And we do have another person in the room?
I just wanted to ask her a quick question. I'm looking at, um.
There's a question for you.
Seventy-eight, uh, the site on Street View. Looks like a vacant lot, but has that building been constructed yet? That house been constructed yet or no?
Uh, seventy-eight, sorry, seventy-eight is been construct a few months ago, but then totally stopped. And because it caused adjacent, uh, house damage.
At number seventy-six? At number seventy-six?
Yeah, damage, foundation, yeah. City called it off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have another speaker?
Yeah, we have one other speaker, Annalisa James.
Um, hi, I am Annalisa James. I live in fifty-one, uh, Fairfield, so I'm adjacent to the property in question as well. Um, I would second, uh, many of the concerns that, uh, May has raised. Um, and primarily, the, the two that we are particularly concerned with is, are the frontage, because the wider frontage does mean the property will be closer to our building. And as May was just speaking about, seeing it happen on our street where an adjacent foundation was affected, we're, um, concerned that that could happen to our home as well. Um, and the other one is the, the protrusion and breaking the parallel, um, is also a bit of a concern for the neighborhood. Um, so I would say those are just two things I'd love the committee to consider and act in a way that, I guess, just protects everyone's interests in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Sir, before you leave, what, can, can you tell me what the frontage of your lot is?
Twenty-five, and we are a single detached.
Twenty-five feet?
Feet, sorry, yes.
I'm a metric guy now.
Oh, um, no, uh, I think it's seven point five-ish, seven point six.
Roughly the size of what's proposed here.
Seven point six.
I think it says here it's six point eight-six that's being proposed per dwelling.
Okay, maybe the scale of this map I'm looking at's not accurate. Anyway, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any, oh, sorry, any questions, a lady? Okay. So, Ms. No? You can't, that, that's inadmissible, your material. Anyway, I don't have it, so it's.
Actually, before you sit down, I do have a question. So, this person has the right to develop this property.
Right.
Well, what would you personally, as the neighbor, what would you like to see on it?
I think ideally a single-family home, one. As opposed to this semi, just something that fits in with the zoning requirements that the city proposes, so that everyone can feel that it is safe and appropriate for their own homes and for the neighborhood.
So, Mr. Basciano? Been opportunity to report what you've just heard?
Uh, let's see, where can we start? Regarding the minor variances, um, she just outlined the ones that, just repeated what the minor variances were, and I ran it by staff at the planning department. And their answer to me was, was staff recommendations, the consent and minor variance is consistent with subsection fifty-one, paragraph twenty-four of the Planning Act. The associated minor variances passed the four-part test under sub- subsection forty-five, paragraph one of the Planning Act. So this was run, I ran this application by planning before I started it. They were pretty good with it, they had no objections with it. I know there's some minor variances, but these are pretty standard.
Okay.
Now, one more question. In terms of the lot frontage, ten point five is recommended for a semi, but the average lot on Fairfield is twenty-five feet, seven point five meters, the majority of the lots. I developed four of them myself. Thirty, thirty-two, forty-two Fairfield, they're all twenty-five-foot lots and so on. There are actually some seventeen-foot lots, uh, a little more west of this project on semi-detaches.
Yeah, like, it looks like three row houses?
Three row houses, sixty-nine, seventy-one and seventy-three. Yeah. So it's pretty consistent with what's happening here.
Okay.
Now, one other question. In terms of the construction-related comments that they had, that's more of a building code issue. I mean, there's inspector, area inspectors, I'll take care of that. And I reassured, uh, May that we are Terion-registered builders. We've been Terion since two thousand and eight, we've got five million dollars liability insurance. They know my work, I've owned about ten properties in their direct neighborhood. So I don't think they should worry about the foundation cracking. I know the project you're talking about at seventy-eight, you're talking four feet wall to wall. That's two feet to the property line, two feet to the other property lines, that's pretty close on a dig. We are approximately seven and a half feet wall to wall, so I'm going nowhere near the property line with the dig. Just to reassure them, on top of the fact that we are insured, so are my excavators, my foundation guys, everybody's insured, so. That's it.
Okay. Uh, I just got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, Transportation Review has asked for notations to be added to your site plan. Are you aware of that?
I'm aware of it, yeah, we'll take care of it at the permit stage, yeah.
And, uh, there are Development Engineering and Transportation Review conditions of approval, you're familiar with?
Familiar with those, yeah.
I don't think there's any other conditions. Okay, panel, any final questions? No, okay. So let's go into committee for, um, I guess, three decisions and one consent, two minor variances.
So with that, I'd like to move a motion on the consent and two variance applications, move a motion for approval, as I believe the applications meet the four tests, subject to the ECS and Development Engineering comments and notations.
A second for Mr. Velland's motion?
Okay, sorry, my light was on, apparently. Light was on, nobody's home. I'll second that motion.
Y'all in favor? That's approved unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, uh, neighbors. Now move to item twenty-three. Application for consent, two applications for minor variances, one application for each of the proposed lots. We have, um, planning clearance, Development Engineering and Transportation Review advisory, not conditions, my reading. Urban Forestry recommended deferral and offered, uh, their condition one in the alternative. We have a Metrolinks advisory, three support letters, six support letters, five opposition letters. That's about it. Adam Brander is the agent.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Adam Brander from Brander Architects. Our address is two sixty, Carla Avenue, Suite two oh two D, and I'm the agent for the proposal at sixty-thirtieth Street in Etopico, York.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to make a presentation to us?
Yes, certainly.
Yes.
Thank you. This proposal, proposal is for severance to establish two lots where one currently exists and create two detached four-unit dwellings. The gentle density proposal aligned with current policy and is in dire need in our residential neighborhood fabric. Following zoning review process completed in twenty-twenty-four, the project completed a preliminary review process with City Toronto planning staff to ensure the project aligned with staff recommendations. For the committee here today is this proposed built form, inclusive of building cladding transitions to relate to the diversity of housing types in the area. If we could bring up the site plan, just to follow along, uh, briefly before the presentation material. Speaking to the proposed built form, um, the proposed dwellings are extremely respectful, almost reverent of zoning permissions. Uh, the proposal includes proposed building height, exterior side setbacks and building depths are all conforming as of right, um, as a entirely conforming built form. If we could jump back to the presentation material now and to walk through the variances, um, that you had up, just, uh, briefly. Sheet one i- is a local lot area study centered around the subject site at the intersection of thirtieth street and Elder Avenue. Uh, green tag lots provide the existing consistent lot pattern, almost without exception. Twenty-three of the twenty-six nearby lots demonstrate prevalent lot pattern with frontages, area and setbacks, all equal or less to the proposed severance marked in yellow. Therefore, the proposed consent respects and reinforces the prevalent lot pattern. Next slide, please. We're just looking at the, uh, neighborhood fabric consisting of two and three-story builds with some older fabric bungalows and even four-story towns in the neighborhood. The proposed design of a full two-story with integrated habitable third-story roof and dormer design would seem most appropriate to reflect the neighborhood around. vernacular styles include a mix of materials, including masonry, stucco and siding, which the proposal also resonates with. Density comparables for approvals for FSI in the area, um, aligned with some of the built forms displayed here in the last ten to fifteen years, include three hundred and six percent the as of right at twenty-sixth Street, two hundred and eighty-two percent at fifty-one Elder and two hundred and twenty-three at twenty-nine thirtieth, to name a few. This proposal is rather restrained in comparison with a proposed FSI of one hundred and seventy-five, the as of right, so it goes to say the proposed density fits and is desirable and appropriate. Next slide, please. Then the thought was to rationalize how the seemingly differences have been supportable. Um, so a trip to Tronoir Archives, um, shed light on this. It was in nineteen sixty-four that the twenty-three dash sixty-four bylaw came into effect for the village of Long Branch at the time. This is where the density permissions were established and hadn't been amended for the last sixty-one years. But time and place and perspective, uh, there's also a historical photo included here, but another thought was that the Toronto Maple Leafs, uh, won the Stanley Cup that year, if anyone can remember that as well. The Beatles released a song, "Our Day's Night," that's what my mother said. Uh, perhaps at the time, Long Branch was a rural area, so this made sense then and there. Uh, also makes sense the community has been approving significantly higher densities in the last decade and before. Um, uh, also, this is where the nineteen, in nineteen sixty-four, where the site-specific clauses came in to play, highlighted here. At the time, the intention was probably appropriate, but sixty-one years later, amalgamated City of Toronto, uh, it seems maybe construed as exclusionary zoning and contrary to current policy. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is just, uh, to reiterate the, the passage of time with, with relation to the application and the current bylaws in twenty thirteen and even amendment just a few weeks ago in twenty twenty-five, I could speak to as well. Next slide, please. There's a, this is an excerpt from the bylaw amendment brought by City Planning and approved by council included here. Highlighted is an override clause pertaining directly to site specifics in this case, stating that fourplexes shall have no more restrictive zoning than detached houses, giving current direction to resolve outdated site specifics. Highlighted as well is, uh, FSI, uh, not being counted, um, a- as, as a measure for fourplexes, and so the built form that I alluded to at the beginning of the presentation is the, the as of, is the, uh, guidelines for the size of the building. Um, uh, with respect to the Long Branch neighborhood guidelines, i- it seemed only three out of the seventeen pages of performance standards were applicable, um, so the application seemed to tread lightly, to exercise caution, we didn't want to presume to be an authority on the perhaps nuance of the specifics of the guideline, so we did reach out to the co, one of the co-authors to be an expert lens, um, in advance of the application. Um, uh, feedback from the co-author speaks for itself in the support letter provided on the application folder from ScoreD planning. Here it declares consistency with Long Branch neighborhood char- character guidelines, and additionally details consistency with the official plan, housing policy and other alignments and sensitivity of the proposal. I know we're running out of time, but just wanted to mention that immediate neighbors were canvassed by the property owners, and it's understood that local engagement is key asset to the building process and community building.
Sir, you've run out of time in your presentation?
Yeah, two further points, just to confirm that eight form letters were gathered in support by the neighbors and another voice, uh, to be heard, prospective tenants, uh, looking to reside in neighborhoods. Um, nearby amenities are also an important voice, so we've included three letters of current tenants of the property owners highlighting positive and healthy living accommodations and property standard of care. Um, and with these, uh, submissions in support, uh, no concern from ECS, uh, support from City Planning and current policy, and the need for gentle intensity projects now, these are my initial submissions and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brander. Panel, any questions, comments? Okay, let's start hearing from our interested participants.
Question?
We have a question.
Yeah. So, just wanted to confirm, so are there fourplexes in this neighborhood, existing?
Uh, there are, it's, um, the permitted number of, of dwelling types, but there's no, no variances for, for fourplexes in the area. It's a permitted use, and the, the recent policy in twenty-twenty-three has, uh, created more widespread encouragement of this type of building proposal.
But are, are there existing precedents there now, do you know?
Uh, I'm, I'm aware of, of some projects in the area, um, but I think more important is the, the current policy that it's non-discriminatory towards different building types and attempt to integrate them into the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So my notes show one person in person, two virtual and one, nothing. A name, but no, doesn't say in person or virtual.
We got one in person, and then you have three additional virtuales, and then not on your list is another one that's virtual on my list.
Okay.
So we'll start with the.
All four names on this list are, want to speak, plus another one.
Correct.
And is Christine Mercado a virtual participant?
Correct.
Okay. So presumably, we have a Jean Bertucci here in person?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'll start with Jean?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Is this on?
Oh, sorry, could you put that microphone at your mouth, not off to the side? Thanks. Go ahead.
Okay.
Name and address?
My name is Jean Bertucci and I reside at sixty-two thirtieth Street. I am here today to voice my strong opposition to the proposed development applications for sixty-thirtieth Street. The proposal seeks to sever the lot into two parcels and construct two detached fourplexes, drastically altering the physical, social and environmental character of our neighborhood. I have significant concerns about the impact of this proposal, both as a nearby resident and a member of this community.
Street, yeah.
My concerns include excessive, one, excessive density and overpopulation. The construction of two fourplexes on this narrow lot could introduce upwards of fifteen to twenty-plus new residents to a single property. This density is incompatible with surrounding homes and places undue stress on local infrastructure, including roads, utilities, garbage collection and emergency access. Two, traffic safety and parking issues. The corner of thirtieth street is already. The corner of 30th Street is already congested and dangerous. I have personally witnessed multiple traffic accidents at this intersection. The proposed development includes no detailed plan for onsite parking, which is alarming. With eight separate households and no street parking on 30th, the spillover will significantly impact neighbouring homes and block essential services. Three, loss of privacy, green space and neighbourhood character. The proposed four-floor space index of 1.05, almost double the permitted 0.6, results in a structure that is overbearing and out of scale. Proposed front and side yard setbacks are drastically reduced, leaving little room for greenery, sunlight or privacy. The development would erode the residential character of our neighbourhood, setting a dangerous precedent for additional oversized incompatible builds. Four, environmental and infrastructure strain. The Etobicoke Lake Shore area's sewer and water systems are already under pressure. Introducing eight units on such a narrow lot raises legitimate concerns about system overload and service degradation. Five, garbage collection and maintenance. With eight households on a single property, waste management becomes a serious issue. Where will garbage, recycling and compost bins be stored? Will they encroach on public space? Overflowing bins and poor storage planning will attract pests and degrade hygiene in the area. Six, community safety. My neighbours and I are deeply worried about the addition of high occupancy tenement-style housing may lead to a rise in crime and social disruption, especially if properties are rented out with little oversight. Seven, zoning violations of concern. Lot area and frontage fall far below minimum requirements. Setbacks on all sides are significantly reduced. Front and third-story balconies encroach onto required setbacks. These applications stretch the definition of minor variances beyond recognition. In conclusion, these applications represent a dramatic overreach and are not in keeping with the Toronto official plan, the zoning bylaws or the best interests of our neighbourhood. It would negatively alter the social, environmental and physical fabric of my home and our community. And while I agree there is a need to address housing, the housing slash rental crisis in Toronto, a project of this size should be confined to major streets where the infrastructure allows for such a project. Personally, I would like to see this neighbourhood become more family-friendly as opposed to more transitional. I'd like to thank the committee for affording me the opportunity to speak before you today and to respectfully ask these applications be denied. Your considered, your consideration is sincerely appreciated. Did I make it? Yay. Four seconds to spare.
Thank you, Ms. Bertucci, and you can collect your punctuality award before you leave today.
Thank you.
I do have a question before she steps away.
Yes.
So you are at number 62 30th Street, is that correct?
Yes.
And you are the only two-story build in that particular block, is that also correct?
It's, it's a multiplex, not a multiplex, it's, what, what's it called?
Is it a duplex?
No, it's, I can't think of the term right now.
Is it a triplex or duplex?
It's, it's a multiplex where some floors are higher than others. It's basically a, it's a single-family dwelling.
It's a single-family dwelling?
Yes.
But it's a two-story dwelling in a lot of bungalows, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so knowing that, you're the immediate neighbour. What would you like, what do you envision seeing there at the, on this lot?
You know, I, I, I would like to see single-family dwellings, even if the lot was severed and there was two single-family dwellings, I would be perfectly okay with that.
Okay.
But eight units on a 50-foot lot, hmm.
What about a single fourplex?
A single fourplex, not ideal. That still introduces the, it's, it's too congested. It really is. I think that it is too congested for, for that area.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we'll now invite Keegan Seal to speak to us. Just take a seat, Ms. Bertucci, thank you.
Hello there, can we hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you very much. I don't think I'm going to do as well as Ms. Bertucci with, with the punctual, or punctuality, but I can try and give some time back here, okay? My name's Keegan Seal. I've lived at 60 feet north of the proposed project at 66 for seven years where I started my family and I was not canvassed about this property. I've lived in the neighbourhood since 1999. That's a long time. That has seen the neighbourhood undergo a couple of major transformations, as have I, been there since I was 11. I'm here to contest application file number A011725, Echo Yankee Kilo Reverend Singh, bylaws covered under 569-2013, all of which have been laid out by another community member addressing another issue, so I will spare us all reciting said bylaws. As brought to light by yourself, council, there are no other fourplexes in the area like this, let alone on the, the busy corner there and included within the, the corridor drawing shared by Adam. I'll be clear though, that this is not a bid to stop the densification of the neighbourhood. In fact, we do welcome it. Nobody I know is against the idea of densifying the neighbourhood. There are multiple active projects in the area where lots are being split to double occupancy and nobody would be objected to that in this case either, I don't believe. There are multiple multi-unit projects in the works as well, with Dunbar Homes recently finishing a about 56-unit project 200 metres east of us. And about 40 metres north of this project, two properties north of myself, there is another 14 units going in, again by Dunbar Homes. These projects have all successfully married the city and province's prerogative of densification over all else with the local constituencies' concerns over safety needs and the very fabric of the communities that we belong to. The variances in those projects do not request that two-thirds of established bylaw be disregarded, such as it does in many cases in this proposed project. The move to bring the structure 63.8% closer to the road than allowed, as laid out by Adam, is in fact in keeping with the, the more recent builds on that particular corridor. But that's it. To consider every other metric and wholly disregards as minor variances is ridiculous. To be 66% closer to your neighbourhood structure than allowed, but to have 71.6% more floor space than allowed for that lot space. The project cannot proceed, right, unless council agrees that, or committee, sorry, agrees that those variances are minor. You, the committee of adjustment, already know that this project cannot continue based solely upon the adjustment request for lot area. In an area where we are pro densification, as is the council and committee, and expected to see this lot split, it's a 60-foot lot in an area with 25 and 30-foot lots, how could an adjustment request still come in at 51%? Because it is at least just slightly more than double what you agreed was acceptable in your most aggressive densification scenario. So, you know, together, we can double the living density of this city, but this proposal is unacceptable and cannot proceed as currently laid out. We, the community, reject this proposal and welcome a more reasonable proposal for double or even triple the living space at 60 30th Street, but hope that the people in the room here can understand that octupling occupancy would reasonably be expected to do anything but negatively impact the surroundings. I'll save the rest of my time.
Okay, I'll just, just make a comment, I'm just looking at the location map for this vicinity and there are numerous lots of this proposed size. In the immediate context here, I'm looking at 65, 67, 55, 57, 59. Directly to the west of this property and I'm butting it as 57 and 59, these lots would be identical in size. And then on the south side of Elder Avenue, 54, 56, 53, 55. And then 55.
It, those all front on their numbered streets and this one fronts on Elder, so it is afforded where the other ones, you're measuring the, the side that faces east or west and the frontage on this property is measuring the south side, which is 60. Which is why the community expected, wholly expected this to be split.
I, I know, I'm, I'm just making an observation of a number of lots around, very close to that intersection of Elder and 30th. Okay, any other questions or comments for Mr. Se, Mr. Seal, yeah? All right, so we'll now invite Bridget Ray.
Hi, I'm Bridget Ray and I live around the corner at 63 32nd Street. And I'm inquiring concerns on my behalf and my neighbour immediately south to me. We have a right of way and it doesn't show on your map that that right of way extends to our properties. So our concern is overcrowded in parking and protecting that right of way because in the past, the house next door to 60, when that house was under construction.
Bridget, sorry to interrupt. Do you mind speaking a little closer to your microphone? I'm having a bit of trouble here.
Our concerns are with parking and overcrowdedness and protecting the right of way. In the past construction, the house next door to it, a construction crew would often use our right of way and block our access. So we, we want to know is any parking going to be provided because there is no street parking? And we think that product, the project is a little too big for our area. There are no fourplexes anywhere. There are a couple of triplexes further down the street from me, but they provide parking. So our concern is mainly the overcrowdedness and the lack of parking and what will happen to the street area and, and our right of way. We want to make sure that our right of way is protected and they don't try to access it and block it.
Okay, Mr. Brander will have an opportunity to address these issues when he has his opportunity at the end of these presentations?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep, that's fine, thank you.
Okay.
That's all, that's, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Panel, any questions, comments for Ms. Ray? Oh, good. Okay, next we have Christine Mercado from the Long Branch Neighbourhood Association. Ms. Mercado?
Good morning, Chair. Okay, so I'm going to need a little bit of help from staff. So I'm speaking to both the LBNA letters. So there was one with regards to the lot configuration and then there was a second one from the Tree Canopy and Enhancement Committee as well. So if I could have both those letters, I'll be speaking to the lot configuration first and then going into the tree, the tree issues as well. Okay, awesome. So if you can just go down to probably the mapping, that's probably the best place to just go. Nope, one more. Yeah, there we go, perfect, thank you. Okay, so my name is Christian Mercado, I'm on Atherton Crescent and I'm the Chair of the Long Branch Neighbourhood Association and I'm here to speak in support of the urban forestry request for deferral to the proposed severance and associated variances. Long Branch is a complete community with a variety of housing types, as referred to in EHAUN, so anyways, the multiplex policy did not change permissions for a multiplex to be built on this site. But the application is precedent-setting, as I'm sure is being recognised. Creating two deficient lots through severance to build two fourplexes does not exist in the geographic neighbourhood, from what we could find. So we are looking at the application in its entirety and using the entire policy, including chapter three and four of the OP and the 99 pages of the Long Branch character guidelines. It's not 14 pages long. So page 21 of the guidelines state new severances creating deficient lots under eight metres do not support the intended purpose of the bylaw. And this is also reflected in 4.1.5, where the OP permits physical characteristics that are not prevailing, as long as it's in significant numbers. So we've completed our lot study and there are 206 lots in the area. 42% are larger than what's proposed. In the immediate context, larger than what is proposed is prevailing at 63%. And that's a significant difference. So the policy makes us move on to the adjacent blocks. And when you look in the adjacent blocks, 49% are larger than what's being proposed. So I understand that this mapping, if you look at it, you can say, oh yeah, severance is proposed, but you really have to dig into the entire application. So when you look at 4.1.5, the lot configuration is pretty much evenly split within the study area. And if you, if you approve this severance, it is a physical change. And as been noted by the other speakers, there aren't a lot of multiplexes in this neighbourhood, but where they do exist, specifically 21 and 31, 32nd Street and 31 30th Street, they're on 50-foot lots with room for amenity space and parking. So they fit in the physical, the physical context, context allowing for privacy, amenity space, proper setbacks and plantable space and preservation of large canopy trees. So it's frustrating. The LBNA has actively been working to respond to, to be supportive to EHAUN and the changes, including welcoming appropriate forms of gentle density, which we have. And this, this application ignores that collaborative spirit. So despite the liberal increases in building length and height for multiplexes, this is not an as-of-right build. This lot could support a single multiplex with no parking and still retain all the trees. So I need to go to Judy Gibson's letter, please. Instead, we're being asked to support a severance that tips the physical neighbourhood character and destroys natural assets. So the Tree Canopy Enhancement Committee of the LBNA submitted a comprehensive letter inventorying the affected trees. There are two city trees, two private trees affected by this application, all of protected size. And the tree declaration on file states no injury or removal. And that's just not credible. One of the trees is a 54 DBH large honey locust and canopy would need to be cut back to accommodate the height and bulk of the new buildings. And our staff have measured the trees and the tree protection zones documented are too small for the actual tree sizes. The sunken front yards extend six feet out and eight feet down, which absolutely damage root system. This is why urban forestry asks for that deferral. The application is moving forward under waiver, even though it clearly does not meet soft landscaping requirements, it was never circulated to urban forestry. And we're left to ask, what was the rush? The picture submitted by the applicant, there was snow on the ground. So why was this not circulated to urban forestry in advance? So then we could look at all of the aspects of this application. So without proper overview and oversight from urban forestry, these trees provide leafy public spaces, shade and wind cover at a bus stop, and it's one of the few stands of mature trees left in North Long Branch. So we're in the middle of a heatwave and we've got news of wildfires across Canada.
Ms. Mercado, you have 15 seconds to wrap?
Sure. I think our position is reasonable. The application for a severance that, for a single multiplex could be built with preservation for all the trees, but we do support urban forestry position for deferral. And if you, and since the applicant's chosen to go forward, we would ask that this is actually refused.
Okay, thank you, panel. Any questions for Ms. Mercado? Okay, so we have one more speaker, Adam?
Yeah, one more speaker, Michael.
Great, thank you. Michael, Chatsky 532nd Street, Etobicoke, Ontario, R M W 3 G 3. I've been a resident here 17 years. I remain in strong opposition to the development notice, noted, or application at 60 30th Street based on compromised safety parameters of the proposed fourplex build close to the property line and will clearly obstruct sightlines of traffic on Elder Avenue. I pass by this property at five different routes that I take our family dog on his daily three-to-four kilometre walk. I drive by this residence at least 10 to 15 minutes. I drive by this residence at least ten to fifteen times per week, if not more, due to the convenience from thirtieth Street to Horner Avenue, Gardner Axis and Evans Avenue, which guides you to Q E W Axis and of course, the retail stores on Queen's Way and beyond. If you take a, a look at the precedent set at fifty-seven to fifty-nine, thirtieth Street, this is what the application should be approved as, two semi-attached residential dwellings. I have extensive familiarity with this property specifically as it has been approved since I've lived here. In recent months, and it's, and it's right adjacent, uh, directly diagonally across the street. Um, in recent months, I've, I've sprained my ankle due to the existing homeowner at sixtieth, sixty-thirtieth Street refusing to shovel the driveway and associated sidewalks with this property. This property is in his, has been inhabited by the Alderwood murderer, Joseph Ayala, who is still on the loose. The killer took refuge in the now demolished steel structure that was formerly on this property. The Toronto Police Emergenced Task Force searched this, this vacant property extensively for Joseph and they came up short in their efforts. A nearby neighbor suffered extensive family fire damage across this, across from this property recently. If this application proceeds, are there any, is, are there any plans to move the dedicated fire hydrant on this property, which actually helped to save that homeowner from, from total loss? Also, this property has been a s- in a state of disrepair since possession. The pictures look great in the affidavit of the sign installed, but what you don't see is a picture of me actually spraining my ankle, trying to navigate the piled snowbank on the property throughout the month of February. Plus, I also noticed that several trees have either been removed or injured, um, further to the, the previous speaker's point. And just wondering if the appropriate permits were sought during this destruction as they were quite sizable and healthy in nature, closest to the laneway as it is shared by several homes on the west side of this property, again, which another speaker spoke about that you don't have, um, on, on this, uh, on these drawings. Uh, the over, over, overgrown grass and weeds, uh, earlier in spring twenty-twenty-five was actually worthy of several bylaw officers having to visit this property, uh, in order to clear the brush. And finally, my tw- my twin toddler sons used Laburnum Park on the opposite side of thirtieth Street at a, at a minimum of twice per week due to its proximity to go trains and the security of the perimeter. So if there is construction of these two parcels of land with reduced visibility to us traveling on Elder Avenue, I will certainly be run over by a vehicle crossing this major intersection. The number of close calls and inches within losing my life because our, because cars are specifically traveling at a high rate of speed from the industrial section of thirtieth Street, which is just north of the goal and via train tracks. And they go southbound. They simply do, do rolling stops or they miss the stop sign completely as it's, as it is buried behind tree cover and, and the bus stop of one-ten-B, um, bus that is supposed to stop at this location. There is even a twenty-two division, Toronto Police Officer that has picked this specific location for rolling stops and as, as it is a major resident concern for nearby residents. Throughout the month of February, due to the snow piled up, the bus did not stop as the owner failed to clean his sidewalk property. Further, due to an existing application that has been approved in principle to extend Elder Avenue to, in the future, to what is Long Branch Avenue within the mental development, I expect that the traffic impact will certainly increase once the townhomes and condominium are fully constructed, leading up to motor vehicle accidents and close calls due to a lack of visibility of the sightline of, on, on tra- of traffic on Elder Avenue. And then finally, thank you for allowing me to speak. I believe the Long Branch Residents Association and an next-door neighbor, Ms. Bertuccia, sixty-two, thirtieth Street, has provided significant opposition to this proposed construction. And I certainly implore you to reject this application based on those foundational points. Uh, thank you, Mr. Brander, for your beautiful research from nineteen sixty-seven. I will highlight, you know, whether, whether or not it's, it's for or against, but there is a fourplex build on thirtieth Street at number twenty-two and number twenty-two, twenty-four. So I would say that they were probably allowed because they're not sitting on a corner and they're not actually obstructing sightlines. Thank you a lot for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Panel, any questions or comments for the gentleman? Okay. So we'll call Mr. Brander back to, uh, rebut the comments and questions that are made by the five neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, um, you know, in due time or, uh, like, questions about what's the rush? So I, I guess like, in terms of the derelict, uh, state of, of the property, uh, this proposal's looking to, to move on it and obviously improve the state, um, from its current condition that I think everyone's in agreement on. With regard to environmental concerns, there was a, an interesting, um, quantification of the site, uh, cause right now, uh, fifty perc- fifty-three percent of the existing bungalow site is, is consists of soft landscaping and the proposed, uh, severance, uh, condition maintains this exact fifty-three percent, um, of soft landscaping for, for a consistent, uh, environmental, um, consideration of the site, um, with what was before. If we could refer back to just the support material, um, sheet six, um, basically outlines the, the nature of, of the proposal, um, with the bylaw amendment impact, um, in relation. So, and if, if you can bring up sheet six, um, again, it just, everything after nineteen sixty-five, um, is conforming and, and it amounts to a lot that is, is very consistent with its immediate, uh, neighbors all along, um, in, in the, um, the lot area study and one variance that, um, i- is for side, side yard setback between the two dwellings, which has no outward facing impact in the zone, which allows, um, even attached properties. So proximity to adjacent structures is characteristic and, and unproblematic. Um, the, uh, with respect to the, the arborist concerns, we've had an arborist report. There was, uh, an updated, um, letter from Urban Forestry that came in on Thursday and we promptly replied to it, um, on Tuesday, um, addressing the concerns. This application was started in last year. Um, so then the nature of the tree protection bylaws, one centimeter, um, of, of tree size, um, can mean a different category of, of tree protection. So we wanted to be up to date with that with the proposal being heard this week and, uh, references to, uh, when we started the proposal, um, last year being the, the initial, um, submission. So I guess the, the updated version is that our, our worst, um, has provided rest assurance that we can conform with, um, arboristry with respect to tree protection measures. And this would be more in the, in the realm of the engineering side of things that, uh, would happen following, uh, like an approval, um, from the committee here. Uh, the resident at sixty-three mentioned the right-of-way. There's, there's no, um, there's no rights to the right-of-way for the sixty-thirtieth property. Um, at least that's on papers, rest assurance that, um, there's gonna be no use of it. And, um, with respect to cars, um, this is a, proposes transit-oriented development. Um, we're right near to transit here and on sheet, the final sheet of the support material kind of reiterates that, and I understand most people use vehicles here, but we are proposing family-friendly units with access to transit, um, which is in keeping with, with the direction of, of planning and current policy and no additional cars, um, would, would be, uh, proposed on, on this street with, with this, um, proposal. Um, in, in relation to, uh, build size, I think there was mention of, uh, two or three or one story, but there's sixty-five and sixty-seven, uh, thirtieth right across the street that are, are three-story, um, structures. And I think the, um, some of the, the interaction with the committee was that, um, around what would, would residents be okay with and, um, catered back to-
You have twenty seconds to wrap up, Mr. Brander.
It's a single-family dwellings or single-family detached dwellings, but the proposed, um, the proposal for, for a fourplex isn't in the variances. It's not, um, it's outside the, the variances that are being requested and it's encouraged by the city of Toronto specifically in the neighborhood. So, um, we hope you can appreciate, um, it's outside, outside of the, uh-
Your, your, your five minutes have run out, sir?
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brander? Oh, okay. Then I think we can now go into committee for a discussion and, uh-
Comments?
Comments, motion?
I have a comment to make, actually. Um, uh, fourplexes are relatively new to the city and, you know, they have to be, I, I think we have to, you know, to do it, do it well if we're going to do it. And I just feel that this site, I think it is a great site for one fourplex. It's a great site for a triplex. It's a great site for two semis. I just worry that it's, uh, an overbuild to try to put two fourplexes on this site. I think that, and if it, and if it wasn't, uh, if it wasn't an overbuild, then you wouldn't have any variances. You'd be building it within the envelope and you're not building it within the envelope. So I think, I think I'm probably going to make a motion for refusal, or at least I'm leaning that way.
Yeah. I think related to what you're saying, Ms. Alderson, I, I'm, I'm concerned about the, among other things, the zero-point-four-five-meter, uh, side yard setbacks that are caused by these big buildings being built on small lots. I, I don't think, uh, you know, I think in my mind, a side yard has to be closer to a meter than, less than half a meter. And then, of course, beyond that, there's the FSI considerably larger. Uh, frontage, I'm not really concerned about the frontage just because of what's in the vicinity of the, the immediate context, but a number of the other variances point to an overbuild. I, I would be inclined to agree with you on that. Any other views? Leans?
Two cents?
No, I do share your concerns. I want to approve it, but the variances on some of the elements are just too-
Right.
They're just too much.
Well, your mic is on, so.
So with that, and based on, um, the evidence provided, like I said, I'd like to approve it, but I can't, so I'm gonna move a motion for refusal.
And I'm going to second that motion.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to refuse. All in favor? That's unanimous. Uh, the application has been refused. Moving on to our final item of the day, number twenty-four, fifty-five, Bywood Drive. This is an application for consent only. We, we normally expect variances to be associated with consents. We don't have any with this one. We have urban forestry conditions, one and two. We have development, engineering and transportation and review conditions. We have a clearance from the Community Planning Department and we have an opposition letter from fifty-three, Gray Oak Drive. And we have, I don't even have to look to know that we have Mr. David Eagleman. Sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, committee members. David Eagleman, Associate and Registered Professional Planner, Design Plan Services, Inc., eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Suite two hundred. And, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, this is quite a straightforward application. I know there is one objection letter from one neighbor, uh, but otherwise, I'm not aware of any concerns or objections from anyone else, neighbors or, uh, city staff. Planning staff confirmed they have no concerns. We're agreeable to the recommended conditions from engineering and transportation as well as urban forestry, standard, uh, consent as well as standard forestry conditions. And, yeah, there, there's really not much to this one. It's, it's quite a large lot. It's approximately, uh, a hundred feet wide or thirty meters, just slightly over thirty meters. We're severing the lot into two fifty-foot lots or fifteen-point-two-four-meter lots. And that is consistent with the existing neighborhood character. Specifically, I think that's highlighted by the fact that we're compliant with both lot area and lot frontage. So the bylaw contemplates these lot sizes within this neighborhood already. And the dwellings that are proposed for the lots are entirely compliant with the zoning bylaw as well. So, uh, I did read the letter from the neighbor. Uh, they raised concerns with a missing FSI variance, but, uh, that's not applicable. There is no, um, maximum F- we are proposing duplexes, so they are exempt from FSI, uh, based on Ontario regulation, uh, I believe it's, uh, four-two, four-six-two-twenty-four, uh, from the province of Ontario. And then otherwise, the neighbor raises concerns with the severance itself, which, uh, I just provided justification for, and I also provided a justification letter speaking to all the justification for the, uh, proposed severance. And I'll, I'll note as well that, uh, this, the, the neighbor who has raised concerns is not directly abutting the subject property. They live, uh, on, they live to the rear of the lots on the north side of Bywood Drive and to the east, a few houses to the east of the subject property. So they are, uh, in terms of direct impact, I, I don't believe this neighbor would experience any direct impact other than the change to the, to the character of the area. But again, these lots are in keeping with the neighborhood character. So it is my opinion that, uh, this proposal meets the consent criteria for, uh, as per section fifty-one, twenty-four of the Planning Act and that this represents good planning and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you represented the owner of forty-nine Bywood not too long ago?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Yeah. Just, I don't know where the information on this is and I'm sure I don't have a brilliant memory, but I do recall this. Very similar proposal, six doors down. This committee refused, I would say less than a year ago, year and a half-ish. Mr. Eagleman represented the, uh, applicant in that case. We refused that application. It went to T-Lab and it got approved. And the language we just heard from Eagleman was very much like he made to the T-Lab officer. And, uh, T-Lab did approve the severance of forty-nine Bywood into two lots, almost exactly the same size as this. So just a bit of history. I don't know how relevant it is, but just-
It is relevant because I was going to ask how many fifty-foot lots are on the street. So it seems like there is a trend toward, uh, dividing up the lots because they are so large and turning them into fifty-foot lots, which are still a very decent-sized lot.
Yes. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, there are quite large lots in this neighborhood. A number of them are larger than, than fifty feet or fifteen-point-two-four meters, but a number of them are right around there. Um, I'll just, I, I provided a lot analysis, but I do have statistics in terms of more fine-grained detail of the neighborhood. So I'll just, uh, pull that up quickly and I can provide you with some in, more information in that regard. So in terms of, uh, lot area, sixty-nine-point-four percent of lots are between five-hundred-and-fifty-five square meters and seven-hundred-and-fifty-four-point-nine-nine square meters. So-
That's within the area you're showing there.
Correct. Exactly.
And I, I recall, I recall you had a finger shake from T-Lab about commenting on a neighborhood which is too broad in terms of the impact, which we're more interested in immediate context. I'm most interested in the south side of Bywood, those lots that back onto Islington Golf Course. That, that's where, that's where the majority of these large lots are. It's only like one block, isn't it? Or maybe two?
Yes. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, the, the block in which the subject property is located is where i- it tends to be the largest lots, uh, within the neighborhood. And those lots, um, in terms of lot frontage, so I, I have statistics for the block, both north and south sides within the same block as the subject property. So in that specific block, the ma- block, the ma- thirty-seven-point-seven percent of lots are between seventeen meters to eighteen-point-nine-nine meters, and then a, a majority, or forty-seven-point-eight percent of lots are twenty-one meters or greater in frontage. So...
That would include the north side of Bywood as well.
That would include the north side as well, correct. But only within the same block as the subject property. And, and, uh, you know, I'll, I'll just make a comment in regards to your comment, Mr. Chair, about what the T-Lab made comments about my neighborhood study area. I delineate it based on the official plan and how that, uh, directs people to, directs us to delineate a neighborhood study area. And the official plan specifically says that you're only to, to place the immediate context of greater relevance when there is a significant difference between the immediate context and the broader neighborhood. So, uh, in my opinion, in this case, yes, lots are larger on, in the immediate context, but to me, that doesn't, that doesn't signal a significant difference, and therefore, it is appropriate to look at the entire neighborhood boundary. And I think there are quite clear, uh, delineations of this neighborhood. I mean, the golf course makes a clear southern boundary, and then the higher-order roads of Kipling and Islington make the east and west boundaries, and then Rathburn Road to the north. I think it's a pretty, I think most planners would, would consider this a pretty straightforward neighborhood boundary. So, um, and then in, in terms of frontage, just i- to provide a little bit more context, thirty-three-point-two percent of lots within the neighborhood are seventeen meters to eighteen-point-nine-nine meters, and, uh, thirty-four percent, thirty-four-point-one percent are nineteen to twenty-point-nine-nine meters. So just a very slight majority of, of nineteen to twenty-point-nine-nine-meter, uh, frontage lots, but a large portion of lots are also seventeen to eighteen-point-nine-nine, and there's nine-point-two percent of lots that are fifteen meters to sixteen-point-nine-nine meters. So lots like this do exist in the neighborhood, and the, the direction in the official plan is to respect and reinforce the prevailing character. It's not to be the same as or even similar to. It's to fit in harmoniously. And in my opinion, fifteen-point-two-four-meter lots, which comply with the zoning bylaw requirement, fits in with this neighborhood character.
Okay, thanks. Anything else for Mr. Eagleman before we, I guess, invite, you must be Mr. Partovi. Okay, I think, David, if you can just sit down, we'll invite Mr. Partovi up to speak to us. You're the immediate neighbor.
My name is Ali Rizab Hartovi, and I live at fifty-three Gray Oak Drive, approximately ninety-five meters on the map from the subject property. I'm here to raise a few concerns about the proposed variance, about the proposed severance, because some, uh, variances have not been captured, as well as there are technical issues regarding this application. When I was preparing my speaking note last night, I noticed a page on the city of Toronto's website that clearly summarized that we raised in both letters and presentation. The exact wording in city of Toronto's website is, "Maximum fellow index regulation, as indicated by a D with a number value in the zone label, don't apply to multiplex anymore. If there is a chapter nine-hundred exception, which applies to the property indicated by an X followed by a number in zoning label, any maximum fellow respects index specified in the exception may still apply." With that in regard, today morning, I received a notice from the city that this, another houseplex bylaw has been passed by the city council, and the notice was sent today morning emphasizing the same thing, that the exceptions continue to be applied in the interim process, because the city cannot review in detail all the exception as of now. They called that the, in the interim process, all the exceptions continue to apply. In that regard, the subject property is zoned RD D zero-point-fourty-five, exception thirty-seven. So while the D value no longer applies, the multi- the exception RD thirty-seven is still dos. The exception dot, uh, thirty-seven says that one-hundred-fifty square meters plus twenty-five percent of the lot area to maximum of zero-point-five. It also requires inclusion of garage space in the GFA, which was missed. Bylaw four-hundred-seventy-two twenty-three, sixty-six twenty-four removed general FSI recap for the multiplex, but it didn't repeal exception RD thirty-seven. That exception remains fully enforced, and it applies to all, any form of residential use on the site, including duplexes. Based on the submitted plan, the proposed growth for area exceed the RD thirty-seven requirement is unclear if the garage area was properly included in GFA as required by exception. I see that the zoning certificate has been issued under this, uh, under the city's stamp, but I do urge the applicant planner, planner as a professional to acknowledge it and request a deferral so that it can be raised and clarified with the assigned zoning examiner. Also, I want to quickly flag a definition two-hundred-fifteen in the zoning bylaw. A detached house that contained a secondary suite is not a duplex. So we cannot use duplex, uh, side, uh, duplex bylaw to avoid or bypass the general requirement of the bylaw. Secondary, in term of policy context, I want to refer to policy eight-hundred-twenty-six of the Toronto official plan adopted through bylaw four-hundred-seventy-three twenty-three. It emphasized that the most, most multiplexes might maintain the low-rise build form and the prevailing lot size and configuration of the neighborhood. More importantly, the policy warns against using the official plan to justify lot fragmentation or assembly of the sole purpose of the intensification, and that's what appears to be happening here, a severance use even though the resulting lot don't match the established lot fabric. I'm saying it's, if the application was not a multiplex, it might meet the official plan. So introducing the multiplex is bringing the official plan four-hundred-seventy-three in place. In simple terms, they should choose one or another. In closing, the proposal may be considered premature under section fifty-one subsection twenty-four of the Planning Act as a severance doesn't appear to conform with the official plan. The application material don't clearly demonstrate how the proposed severance meet this relevant criteria under this section, particularly with this, uh, respect to the consistency with the local character serving adequacy and planning conformity. Because I have a minute time. So today morning, I received a letter, email from the city of Toronto, notice of pass, passing of the zoning bylaw six-hundred-forty-eight twenty-two-five. In the notice of passing bylaw, the city is clearly saying that because the city doesn't have the time to review all the exceptions, all the exceptions continue to apply in the interim process when they're monitoring the multiplex. Uh, so the, the, the actual wording is where a chapter nine-hundred exception has principal building requirement for the detached house, such a building setback or other building requirement continues to apply. Uh, similarly, sorry, uh, uh, because this was published this morning, so I'm not quite ready. But in summary, they're saying that all the exceptions under chapter nine-hundred...
So you've only got thirty seconds?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay. I just, I guess just my comment is, I don't know if you last sighted this, we're only dealing with the consent here, just the severing of the lot into two. We're not talking about building size, height, depth, nothing.
Uh, there is a mistake.
Or typology. Duplex, single detached. We're not talking about any of that. It's just, what we've been asked to do is consider approval to split this l- large lot into two. That's it. Nothing to do with buildings. So if he wants to do something on these lots that require variances from the zoning bylaw, he'll be back for those. But at this point, we're just talking about, as I say, the, the severance of the lot. That's it. No- nothing to do with bu- buildings.
Can, can I add something here? The drawing submitted with this application captures FSI that is more than a, a load by bylaw. There is a mistake in the drawing. That's why it's a part of this application. I'm not rejecting this application. I'm asking the FAL to clarify that, because, because it's a part of this application. If the app, there is a mistake in the application, we should capture it. We should agree on, and there is a professional planner here. They should understand this.
Well, we don't clarify, but I can tell you, if the bylaw required a sixteen-meter frontage, there'd be a variance to allow that, and there isn't. So, and the same with the area of the lot. Th- these, these frontages and areas are in compliance with the zoning bylaw of the city of Toronto. They are. Any questions for Mr. Partovi? Okay, Mr. Eagleman, you have, uh, five minutes to rebut what Mr. Partovi presented?
Yes, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. And I apologize to the neighbor for turning off the mic. I'm, it's a habit, uh, when I leave the podium. But, um, yeah, I, perhaps I can clarify, Mr. Chair, the neighbor would be a hundred percent correct if it wasn't for the Oreg from the province. So that's the missing piece that the, the neighbor is not considering. The Ontario regulation from the province has eliminated FSI for any residential lot that has a second or third unit on it. So because we have a second unit in the proposed dwellings, they are exempt from the maximum permitted FSI based on that, uh, Oreg. Uh, again, it's Oreg four-six-two-twenty-four. So it's relatively recent, but, uh, again, the neighbor would be a hundred percent correct if it wasn't for that Oreg. So based, because of that Oreg...
We have no information on your buildings, nor are we asked to approve anything related to your buildings, correct?
Uh, well, through you, Mr. Chair, we actually did submit our zoning certificates with plans.
I just looked at those, yeah.
Um, so we did, we did submit plans of the proposed dwellings, but you are essentially correct. There are no variances, and zoning certificates have been issued. So the zoning department has confirmed that these dwellings are entirely compliant with the bylaw. And again, the FSI is because of that Oreg, so there is no missing variance here. Uh, and then, just again, I mean, I think I provided everything I can really provide in terms of the severance. Uh, in my opinion, it does meet the criteria under section fifty-one-twenty-four. I did address that in my, uh, cover and justification letter, and I, I provided some statistics. Again, there are, there are lots that exist already in this neighborhood that are similar to what we're proposing, and those, those existing examples demonstrate that given lots that are similar to what are proposed already exist in the neighborhood, those are living examples today of lots that already can and do fit in with the character of the neighborhood and, and already make up part of the character of the neighborhood. And so I think, uh, yeah, I think I've provided everything I, I can, so I'm happy to answer any additional questions, but, uh, I think that's everything for me.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Eagleman. So let's go into committee for discussion if we need it, or a, a motion.
So with that, I'd like to move a motion for approval, as I believe the application meets the porters' subject to the ECS and forestry conditions.
Okay, motion to approve from Mr. Bell. Is there a seconder?
I can second that motion.
Ms. Alderson, all in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Partovi.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
You too. So I'll call for a motion to adjourn at two-fifty-eight PM.
That was my job.
I, I'm inviting it from you.
Oh, so, sorry, yes, I'd like to call for adjournment at, uh, now two-fifty-eight?
Yep.
Still make it. Two-fifty-eight PM, all in favor?
We are adjourned.
I'm choking. So excited.